Good to be here in person. It's been quite a while since last fall. So it's great we can do it. I know it's a long drive for some folks, but hopefully we will strike a very straight balance between in person and virtual meetings. So first is, are there any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none. Then I guess the next item is that we will take our attendance for introductions. And as you know, I'll go through listing counts and if people can respond when their municipality is called, starting with Albert Town.
Alex had a rescheduled time for me.
Well, it's with Albert Village, Bakersfield.
Field Linda McCall.
Thank you. Berkshire.
Hi, this is Josh Grimsen, Berkshire.
Inisburg Falls.
It was touch.
So I'm not muted.
Inisburg Town. Fairfax, Parkerburg. Fairfield.
Duck Flubber.
Julia Callan.
Fletcher. Warren football. Doug Franklin. Gary Franklin. Montana, right, Alan Franklin. Georgia.
Did you hear? Both Carl and Kirk.
Ring dial.
Barclay Doom, Barclay Morris.
Howard Demais.
Hi Dave. Hi Dave.
Jack Belkey, hi Dave.
Hello, Matt. Montgomery. North Hero.
Yeah, the young one.
Richford. Sheldon. Ask the seven. In Allen City. Elizabeth Nair. In Allenstown. Here at the Hudson. And I can tell. South Hero. Bob Durman. Peter Zemore. Swan Town.
The Golden, Washington Town.
Swanton Village.
Damon Rogers, Swan Village.
Maggie Bridge, Philanto, Swanton Village.
Okay. Catherine, can you ask the staff?
Sure. Well, that's your first staff. I'm like five staff.
Dean Jerson.
And Catherine Dimitri. I don't know if there's anyone who's got on one. We have Catherine on a lot of staff. And online is Catherine before.
Okay. So we've got two main agenda items tonight. We're going to hear about Let's Build Homes and we're also going to hear about developments in amending the regional plan to deal with the housing targets and the land use maps. And Bill Irwin just arrived as well. And Bill, thanks for coming.
This is on City Hall.
Okay, the next item, oh, opportunity for public comment. Hearing none. Then the next item is minutes of the April 2025 meeting. Is there a motion?
The motion means something.
There is second?
Oh, second now.
Any comments or suggested changes to the minutes? Hearing none. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Close. The motion passes, the minutes are adopted. And the next item, first substantive item, is presentation on Let's Build Homes. As soon as he finishes chugging down, we are blessed to have Miro Weinberger, the Executive Chair of Let's Build Homes, former Mayor for on 10th and former developer of affordable housing. So it's great to have you here, Miro. Thank you very much.
Well, it's great to be with you all. Thank you, Peter. And thanks for having me. The invitation keeps me nervous to get something in my teeth here. Hopefully that won't be there from um, I really appreciate the chance to be with you and um, talk a little bit about this new organization. We've been around since January and what that we're trying to do, the role that we're trying to play and do. Um, we had a meeting with Catherine and the other RPC um, directors about a month ago. It was a great conversation and it's pretty clear that if we are successful at sort of building less built homes in the organization we want it to be, we will hopefully be a three-point participant at these meetings and the other RPC meetings around the state, particularly the next couple of years, given what's going on with the PAC 250 mapping. But before getting to that, let me just, I do have a little PowerPoint here. Try to share it. So, we got. So first and foremost, Let's Build Homes is trying to be a true statewide coalition of all the different organizations as well as individuals that um, would benefit from a, you know, an abundant housing Vermont future too well. Um, we have a coalition that is very focused on Vermont's housing shortage. Uh, we are specifically focused right now on the Vermont Housing Finance Agency report that came out last summer that indicated that we need to build 30,000 homes um, by the year 2030 in order to sort of address that shortage, address the worst aspects of that shortage. And we see this as truly a statewide problem and we are trying to build a statewide coalition to address it. And we've been quite successful at that. This is, these numbers are a few weeks out of date now. We're up over 235 organizations that have signed on as well as about 1750 Ramoners from all over the state. Um, the organizations really are, represent the broad set of different um, interests that are suffering right now from Vermont's housing shortage. So you have the kind of groups you would expect in there, the affordable housing, traditional affordable housing groups are a core foundational part of this coalition. Um, builders, people wanting to be in construction, and you imagine ours as well. But I think one of the things that makes Let's Build Homes different than previous housing efforts is this also includes AARP. It includes youth groups like special needs services that it should encounter. It includes um, uh, utilities from around the state that are suffering workforce issues that includes hospitals very significantly from around the state. They've been some of the active early members, you know, as a, as a sign. I was really happy to see the hospitals come on board. Um, there was a report that came out last summer from the Agreement on Care Board that was trying to address the rising healthcare costs that we've seen, I'm sure you all and your various organizations are experiencing. Um, it was a report trying to say, what do we need to do essentially to fix Vermont healthcare? And the number one recommendation of that report was build more homes because of the way in which the lack of homes is impacting the workforce throughout the state. So, you know, we've really, it's the coalition that believes that, that, that the shortage has gotten so bad. It's really, uh, it's rippling through these other aspects of Vermont life. And that's why this coalition has gotten so big, so quickly. There are educational institutions on here for the same reasons. If you're interested in seeing the full list, we do have a website up at let'sbuildhomes.org. And um, I do want to make sure I invite you one or a few times tonight. If you, if you find something compelling about what we're trying to do, please consider checking out the website and considering joining as an organization or as individuals. We do have many municipal officials. Um, and some are, some regional members have that photo as well. Um, this, uh, this is a graph produced by, I don't know if you, people have seen Kevin Chu's speaker recently brought us this graph. This is part of the Vermont Futures Project, but I, it coincides well with what we're focused on. This shows how over the last, you know, really since the turn of the century, there have been, had a change in Vermont's historic population growth. I was actually, you know, a lifelong Vermont, I was born and raised down in Hartland Woodstock area. But even as somebody who's been around Vermont, I was surprised by this, uh, graph. It meant in part, I wasn't clear on how consistent Vermont's population had, growth had been after World War II up through the year 2000. You can really see that the trend changes um, over the last 25 years with essentially a flattening without um, the green, you know, the right side of that graph is, is what, you know, Vermont Futures Project and essentially Let's Build Homes is advocating for. So we try to kind of catch up to that, that historic growth. Um, the, uh, this is another graph by the Vermont Futures Project that shows, it takes a little moment to interpret it, but I think it tells a pretty concerning story. It's really the story we've heard here in government. Scott speak about for the last decade, as, as the population flattened out and as, as you'll see, which coincided with this really stopping building, um, the demographics of the state changed pretty dramatically. It's almost as if the state just got 20 years older since, over the last 20 years. You see a much smaller population, the sort of school age population, smaller. Um, that green is sort of the work, our core workforce population went from about 220 um, 6,000 down to 185,000. And then the red, in red is the 65 plus population doubles from 77,000 to 243,000. Um, to me, that's, you know, and one more graph to show you here on the left. That is the housing production rates overall that time period. So you can see in the 90s, we were building, sorry, the 80s, we were building almost 2%, 2% new homes. Just shy of 2% new homes every year for that decade. That started to drop off in the 90s. And we can see around the turn of the century, it really drops off dramatically. And for the better part of quarter century now, we've been building basically a third of the rate in the 80s. Um, so that, our diagnosis is that's what's driving the housing shortage. That we, we stopped building at the rates we had in the past. Demand has continued to rise. Um, you see that in sky high uh, housing costs, you know, I think one thing that everyone agrees on, maybe not everyone is completely comfortable with the idea that we need to do more building, but one thing that everyone agrees on is the cost of housing is, is too expensive. We think there's a direct relationship to it. When, when there's some limited scarcity of homes, there's greater competition, there are homes that do exist. That drives up costs. If we want to get to a place where we don't have one of the highest homelessness rates in the country. If we want to change the fact that a, 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 a half of Vermont renters are rent burdened by kind of historic affordability standards and a quarter spending, are spending more than half of their income on rent. That's a really, you know, a high risk of housing instability and eviction. If we're wanting to change those factors, we've got to get back to, to building. Um, that red graphic is from the Vermont Housing Finance Agency report last summer that identified that 30,000 home need. Um, the blue on the, is, is what we have been producing going back about a dozen years. You know, it shows we have consistently been building 2,000 to 3,000 homes a year to hit that 30,000 home target. We've essentially, there's some range there. That's what makes the, the green part of the graph a little bit hard to read. There's sort of like a hard green and then there's the lighter green above it. That's showing our range. But basically, we have to double the housing production rate if we're going to get in the ballpark of meeting these numbers. Um, the, that is an ambitious goal. We think it's an achievable goal. I mean, doing it in five years is certainly going to be challenging. However, um, a few data points that make me think this is a reasonable thing to, to target. Um, one is that historic rate that, you know, you only have to go back to the 80s to find a time that we were building at the kind of rates or even more than what we need to meet these goals. My experience in Burlington makes me think it's possible too. We, we really had to come a city when I came into office in 2012. We had, our housing market was really broken. We, we had, we really missed out on that whole housing boom of the, the 90s. Um, we were focused for 12 years on infrastructure investments. We focused on regulatory changes that would make it easier and more predictable to build homes. Um, I did, as Peter said, I had been, I, I, I sort of lived that world as an affordable housing developer for about 15 years leading up to it. And we made a, we really moved the needle. By the time I left, we were, we had increased housing production by, by some measure, something like 400%. So, uh, you can change the trajectory. It's a problem you can face. You can change the trajectory with concerted um, sustained effort. And that's what Let's Build Homes is trying to do. How are we trying to do it? Um, one big, this was our sort of our launch agenda and this is sort of laid out in a little more detail. If you do go to our let'sbuildhomes.org website, um, but I'll just walk through quickly what we identified for starters. Um, infrastructure is a big one. Um, we have been very committed to this community housing infrastructure program, which you might have been reading about a little bit, if you've been kind of following what's been happening in a month later this session. Um, Corey Parent, who was on the agenda and who with me tonight is our, you know, I imagine a lot of you guys know, know Corey, um, uh, you know, I'm coming to say office without Corey. It was, I feel a little vulnerable. But um, he, uh, he stuck out a month earlier, uh, still because there is a conference committee going on on this bill through the Senate and the House right now. Corey is our lobbyist there, working on it. Um, I, have you all heard of, is, is people have been following this issue? People know it from great. So, um, you probably also know, you know, there's still some drama around it. The House passed a version last week. It was quite different than the version that said it passed a month earlier. Um, that's why they're in this conference committee. We're feeling quite optimistic that we're going to come out of this with a, with a strong bill. There, I, I think people, I, I sense legislators are hearing from a lot of different directions that this message about the housing shortage and the need to take further action. And I'm, I'm hopeful, I've always been optimistic. I'm hopeful they're not going to go home without um, with that movie, with that movie forward. I, I do think, um, that if it passes, it really is going to unleash over time hundreds of millions of dollars for infrastructure investment around the state. I do think this could really change the, 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 the next decade of what RPCs do. Um, you may, if, if this passes, there may be towns that need technical assistance, need this sort of staff capacity that RPCs have to advance some of these infrastructure projects. I know you already planned and helped with the infrastructure projects. I think this may really um, put us into a new era of, uh, of, of, of what can get done within these sort of last mile infrastructure projects. I, I, it's unclear that, that chip will be useful for a situation like, uh, I, you know, I've visited fairly recently and there, they really, they're trying to get over that hurdle, like how do you start a new wastewater treatment system for a town that's never had it? I'm not sure. It will take some creativity to figure out how to do that with chip. What chip will work really well for is if you have a piece of land that is adjacent to existing sewer infrastructure, extending the lines out, adding to the street network, adding, you know, depending on what the form of the building goes through, you know, adding some other public amenities, even like recreational amenities around that expanded housing area. It's for that kind of incremental last mile expansion, it's going to be a really useful tool. Um, and we're pretty excited about it. I'll answer questions if you want to use the time that way about what we're thinking about it. Um, I will. We're also excited about it and that it has been a great proof of concept that I, I think one of the, you know, saying modestly, I think one of the reasons this is going to happen this year, knock on wood, is, it's a lot of things behind it. And the psych, psych system for another client has this abundance book out, which is changing the way people are talking about these issues. Um, the BHFA report struck a chord. Uh, you, um, uh, I think the Vermont elections last year and the focus on affordability of this comes since has changed what the legislature is at on these issues. But Let's Go Home has been part of why we've been able to get this done this year, when it's never happened in the past as well. To toss that as a great proof of concept that this new coalition can, can get things done and can move things forward that have been challenged from the past. So what are we moving on to next? Um, we, we, oh, sorry.
Corey, the question I'm looking at that, can I just ask one question about the chip?
Yeah.
You know, that you didn't think that taxing from it by insane part of that would really be helpful for new construction of facilities. What about filling a funding gap if a, if a facility is in the planning stages and we've got a gap?
Yeah.
Funding. To me, that seemed like an opportunity.
Yeah, no, I think it did. Um, the
Thank you.
And I think with some creativity.
I think you.
I mean, fundamentally, the way it's gonna the, the fundamental structure, I think allows for creative uses. Um, so, you know, it's the, when you have a project, when you're a builder and a municipality that want to work together, they sign an infrastructure agreement. I think we're going to have a pretty broad definition of what, um, that money then the increment can be used on. I think certainly, yeah, if you had a project that had been in planning for years and had 75% of the plumbing lined up and there was a gap and there's a big project coming online, it could be a perfect sort of last piece of the financing. Abs- absolutely.
That's the answer I wanted to.
I think there may even be kind of sophisticated ways, uh, if you're at an earlier stage, maybe there's a way you can, maybe there will be a way to sort of, uh, an early project. I, you know, what's going to be hard is like, it's very project based. So if you don't have all the projects coming online at the same time, how do you coordinate those resources to amplify and kind of work together? Will be challenging, but with some creativity, I think people do. We are, um, want to be clear, Let's Go Homes, every, we, we try to make this clear every time we speak publicly. We do support continued public investment in what we have traditionally thought of as affordable housing. We think that that kind of government investment is part of, is necessary. It's part of the solution to Vermont's housing affordability challenges. And we have been active advocating for that, those monies, those investments continue. And I also want to be clear, we see the affordability challenges being broader than just doing that traditional affordable housing investment. Um, and let me say a little more why, why we say that. Um, the it, it, it goes back to the numbers we're talking about here. If we take seriously that the BHFA report is anywhere near accurate, saying that we need, you know, five, 6,000 homes a year, an increase of 2,000 or 3,000 homes a year, that the entire affordable housing infrastructure system, which is very good here in Vermont, we have outstanding nonprofits that do this work and we have frankly disproportionate resources compared to other states because of the federal delegate, strength of our federal delegation, Patrick Lakey's small state minimums, uh, state activism, the Vermont Housing Conservation Board, that is unusually large state fund. You add to that local funds, like the London Housing Trust Fund. We put a lot of money into, into these subsidized, permanently affordable, um, homes. And that system produces, or at least before the pandemic, a huge, huge amount of federal money. It's been sort of unique to the last few years. That system produces about 200, 250 homes a year. So if we're serious about adding 2, 3,000 homes a year or more than that, beyond that, uh, it's got to come from, it's not going to come from that system alone. It's just, it's hard to envision a world where we've had enough subsidies to do that. We, we need to get the, the market working better than it has in the past. So again, that's, I see that as, you know, more, a more expansive vision about what housing affordability needs than just focusing on, you know, big A, permanently affordable, we're for housing of all shapes and sizes for people of all backgrounds. Um, certainly regulatory change is going to be part of how we get there. And I guess most of our, I'd like to, in the, um, our remaining time, um, and how, what are you kicking me out? How much longer do we have? One, one. Um, the, uh, we are now with chip kind of finishing up. Hopefully we are starting to return our attention to, to the ACT 250 tier mapping effort. Um, and, um, we have pulled together a work group that includes, um, people from around the state that are serving on the, on the Let's Build Homes board, um, as well as, you know, real professionals in this area. We, we started meeting. I know we, I wish we'd gotten this going a year ago in some ways, but we are where we are. Um, it is, and I really welcome feedback and thoughts from you all on this. Our, one of the reasons we targeted this as our next sort of big area, there's a, there's a number of reasons, but, um, uh, one of them is I, my experience in Vermont with designated areas and sort of all the past times we've done mapping as a state. We had ended up, I think by design, with very tightly restricted designated areas. Um, you know, what I mean by that, like when I was a developer, we were trying to do, do a project in Randolph, uh, in, sorry. Um, yeah, in, in Randolph, Vermont. And we had a, I said, you couldn't kind of have a more smart growth site than the one we had. It was the old, um, Ethan Allen Furniture Site, which is about a three minute walk from Main Street. And, um, we, uh, we were, you know, we were trying to put a couple, a few different apartment buildings, anthems, anything like that, like homes in there. You would, you would think it would be um, a, a great site for all the smart growth benefits that the state would have to offer. But we weren't in the designated downtown. We had to go through ACT 250 anyways. And, and, uh, so that's, the experience has always stuck with me. And so I would say a goal of ours here is we want to make sure we come out of this process with, with maps that are consistent with these ambitious housing goals that the state has, has laid out. Um, and I think that is going to mean, um, generous tier one A and tier one B areas. I think that is really where this change to ACT 250, it opens up the possibility of real housing growth in the tier one A and tier one B areas. And, um, uh, so that's, uh, you know, what I mean by generous. It doesn't, I don't mean all over the state. But I do think that, um, I think it's something like what these exemption, these temporary exemption areas that the legislation also set up. And I guess one concern or one thought, we, we're, we're not very far against this, but I guess to share just our, our, I have some slides that can, if one of people want to talk about shit more, but to get into ACT 250 here. Um, from what we've seen about the map so far in Chitting County, you had, you did have a few concerns and questions that have come up that I'll sort of, not on the table, I think it might be interesting for us to kick around. One was, I, I was surprised seeing the map by the complexity of it. I guess not being in the weeds, I thought we were going to see sort of simple tier one, tier one, tier two, tier three, maybe a tier one A and tier one B. But no, the map actually, as you guys probably fully understand, is, is, has all these different elements to it. These 11 different land use designations that, um, are currently there. And, you know, I get having a map over onto the tier one A and tier one B. Um, but just there is, there's more complexity to it than I, as a little kind of layperson anticipated. Um, there are questions that are coming up in Chitting County process about whether the RPCs will have the authority to um, uh, make sort of common sense pro-housing decisions. Uh, for example, one of them, the new partnership with Charlie Baker, I think is interesting is if you can picture the intersection of Shelburne Road and 189, um, where, you know, right there at Buffalo, wow, yeah. It's definitely not, uh, yeah, it is a nightmare. It is, but it is, it is against, it is an area we have sort of committed to develop. You would think, I would have thought that would naturally fall into a tier one A or tier one B area. You would think, I would have thought that would naturally fall into uh a tier one A or tier one B area. Charlie thinks it's questionable whether the LRB, the Land Use Recovery Board, will have the authority to uh, call that it the tier one area because of, um, because the language really pushes you towards existing, like, kind of these historic settlement patterns. So, um, that, that is an area, you know, he, we we will see, maybe that concern will prove to be unfounded. But I think beyond that, um, the the maps that the the draft maps that they have up about around uh Richmond or um Jericho, um, it is really quite a narrow area that will be eligible for one A would be a much narrower area than these temporary exemption areas. So that that concerns us, um, about whether, yeah, whether you will be able to get maps at the end of this process that respond to the the housing need. Um, questions about how the maps can change over time and it's gonna be the initial maps that, uh, but are these gonna be kind of living documents or are these gonna be kind of bounties that are set in stone over time? Um, so those are, those are questions and concerns. I will say there's also a lot of excitement within Let's Go Homes and the partners we've been talking to about. It does seem to me that these tier one A and one B areas, well, maybe for the first time in Vermont's modern history, kind of represent a consensus about where we want growth and, you know, a state where we've always had real ambivalence back growth. I think that's the promise of this is that one A and one B, you know, here we have consensus or that this is where we want substantial housing in the future. Um, with that consensus, I think it's interesting to think, you know, what what can be kind of added on? Are there other policies that can make, help make those areas realize that potential even better? And Chip is an example of that. There's a debate, one of the things they're debating right now in the conference committee is where Chip is gonna be usable. And there's a kind of a tough debate going on between, and it it's a representative of this broader debate about where we want growth in the state. And there are growth fees that are pushing for all of tier two to be eligible, and there are some forces pushing back against that. One thing everyone agrees on is tier one A and where one B should be able to use Chip. Um, so to me, that's an early example of how we, you know, this represents, this this map is gonna represent this consensus. I, um, uh, wonder whether other policies in the near future could kind of be added on to expand, expand that potential. Whether that's about appeals reform or, um, uh, some some changes to the way some ANR permits work in these in these areas. Um, I think there's, there's some rich conversation to have, but. One of the laws there, that's sort of where, that's where Let's Go Homes is at, that 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 base sense and how we're interested in pressing gap.
I I have kind of a tangential question, but. From my perspective, there's a big choke point when you go from low-income housing to the middle class. And there's a lot of people who today are in low-income housing, their families are growing and their income's going. But I think I saw the the latest median figure for Chitting County is four hundred something thousand dollars per house. And, yeah, I don't expect public to subsidize middle-class housing. But if people never can reach the point where they can move on from a subsidized or a low-income housing to a middle-class home, then you're just gonna have to keep building more low-income housing because it's gonna just back up from that point down. And, you know, from a builder's perspective, um, you make an awful lot more money building one six thousand square foot house than you do from building two point five, three thousand square foot houses. And there's gotta be at least some thought about how do you make the next level buildings affordable for people? Or hopefully bringing in, and. I don't, I don't hear, I don't hear that something wrong.
So your response to that is very great observation. Um, I would say. Chip is in a small way, a lost way, a response to the the high cost of new construction and that it's not a solution to all the new construction costs. But at least takes on, many projects do face this big initial hurdle of a big infrastructure cost being just added to the project in our current system. This this takes, creates a public revenue to to build that public infrastructure, it takes a, um. I, in terms of where let's, who is, who is on that list, we didn't, I didn't really pause on it. But I, I think other ways that we're looking at it, that we get, you know, see government action could impact construction costs. There's, there's a lot of excitement around this discussion of kind of factory builds or modular housing. Um, there, there, there may be things, the, there's a big VHFA report out last year on this. Um, a lot of states are looking at this and some, you know, certainly if you look, uh, if you looked at other countries like Sweden, for example, like almost half of all their new homes, yeah, built in in factories. Um, there, this may be an area we can get some efficiencies and get some some cost savings that would, that would lead into into that. So, um, pushing, if we change our regulations so that truly each, uh, homes of all shapes and sizes can get built. You could see, um, more infill, infill smaller structures that might, there's still new construction, it'll be a certain premium attached to it, but it will. Uh, there will be smaller homes, there are, there are sort of a natural way that you spell affordable homes that we've gotten away from, uh, in a lot of ways, and regulations that got into the way of. So we're, we're addressing that. That's another thing we are.
And and something I'm seeing to be, in Europe, it's the multi-use buildings where you have businesses on the ground floor and then you have basically condos or apartments or something like that.
Yeah.
In in the same area, um, which, living in the middle of our grid aisle, I love where I am. But if I wanna go out through there, yes, it's very much, and it's each way. Um, and I have that, France, there's the situations where, yeah, you walk down the stairs, if you want three storefronts down and you sit down and essentially a pub or restaurant, something like that. Um, so hopefully, hopefully, that would become.
I think we're seeing some of that wrong then now, not necessarily Franklin County. Um, but, um, Battleboro has, Bennington has a great project. There's a couple of recent pipeline where you may have childcare, you may have even like that lawless. Um, so retail and commercial space and then, you know, apartments, um, some arm set aside as subsidized and some are already ready. So I, I think folks are figuring it out, um, more than.
Has, has there been a specific discussion? Because you mentioned earlier about the healthcare crisis that we've created in healthcare workers. And so how, how would that help, like specifically trying to create housing for, you know, tax?
Yeah.
Physicians and wear clothes.
UBM has invested in law housing in South Bronx, uh, currently.
Yeah, it's pretty remarkable. If you haven't been to the South Bronx and Newtown Center recently, it's really, it's a high activity right now. There's just a ton of construction going on. UBM, that sort of has, and UBM have both been sort of institutional partners. That all, yeah, um, and.
Housing for more.
Yeah.
At least pounds.
Yeah, I think they're, um, I think they're encountering some. I started hearing about the, they're, they're learning some of the challenges of being both an employer and a, uh, a property owner, um, you know. Uh, so I, you know, yeah, I think things, it's a sign of how bad things have gotten that you have these institutions, uh, taking this step. And I think that's gonna continue. I think what they would prefer, um, i- is it, you know, if if the, we got the laws right. Um. Uh, we, you know, you wouldn't, I I think we've got to a point now where you really do need these large institutions, in many cases, involved to uh, over, you know, you were seeing a similar thing happen in Millbury College, they're putting a big chunk of their endowments with a new project down there. And that's great, and we should encourage and more of that, and I think we will see some more of that. I think it is in some level a sign of how bad things are, that it takes these sort of extraordinarily, kind of unusual actions to, um.
But but these hospitals, maybe UBM's okay, but a lot of these hospitals aren't receiving money, so.
Yeah.
And yet, they need to have the services and so, so not quite sure how.
I think they're not, they're trying, they're, they're trying to do those projects in a way that they're not sort of undermining their bottom line that they, you know, these aren't, they're essentially built to mark your grades, so they, um, they certainly are, they are, but. It's, um, you know, there's just, uh, there's projects in the southern part of the state where the hospital is acting as a developer as well. And there, they're funny, they're confronting Act Two Fifty challenges, appeals, they're slowing things down. So I I I don't think the big institutions get in the way of sort of getting our laws right and, uh, ensuring that we have a system that makes it possible for for housing to be produced.
I have a quick question about that, um, I had written down some notes about the definition of affordable housing, specifically when I think of the age group between twenty-five and forty-nine, those are the people who are likely to have a job, they're out of school, maybe still in school. But those are the types of people we wanna attract locally, locally. Is there a price point, like a either square footage of a total home space or price per square foot? It fits affordable housing for that demographic, just like, the the HFA have like metrics of what they're asking to build that what is actually an affordable house? Because if you look at any prices right now, you mentioned how much, someone mentioned how much it was to buy a home. What is affordable, like, what's that demographic? I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, no, I mean, the numbers are, at some level, especially if you kind of look at it through exactly the frame you were saying there. The numbers are discouraging, like, the average price of a new home statewide, um. In in Chitting County, I believe the average, like, the median price of a newly constructed wholesale home was like seven hundred thousand dollars.
That's insane. So like, my house was fifteen hundred square feet, probably less than that once you take off the, I mean, the usable space, it's not like this. Fourteen hundred, I mean, is that the size of a home that you're building?
Uh, I think for that one, it's, fourteen hundred is probably a little small for them.
That's what I'm saying. So you gotta look at how much it costs to buy fourteen hundred square foot home in Franklin County or anywhere else.
Yeah.
And I think what we might be defining as homes we wanna build as affordable housing for low income and how much square footage they're gonna have.
Yeah.
It doesn't add up to me like how we, how we get there or here, um, to actually put people who can afford and have a job that pays that kind of mortgage. It's staggering.
So I wanna be. Um.
I have a question on the spot.
No, you're not gonna be on the spot. I think this is a great conversation. This is, and I wanna be clear about, here's, Let's Go Homes attitude about this is truly, we need more homes of all shapes and sizes for people of all backgrounds. I do wanna defend the, I think we need more of those seven hundred thousand dollar homes. Even if they don't, they aren't addressing the, um, greatest need. They do help in in a number of ways. I mean, first of all, this issue problem is so bad that even at the high end of the market, I hear from hospitals and other, like, senior employers that are being hired for six-figure salaries, they can't find a place to live.
Yeah.
And that's a problem for the state.
Four years to build, a friend of ours just took up a really huge chunk, a few blocks down from their other income to make a lot. But it took way over a year for them to get permanent productions, like the yellow list, to do it. But they had money to spend and they were already here. I think of people coming in.
So I think serving that part of the market is important for the future of the state in and of itself.
Yeah.
But also, you, when you can create a new home at that level, it, you know, generally, in many cases, it's freeing up. Someone is relocating there from a smaller home, from a less expensive home, that then goes on to the market and serves, you know, there's an interconnected.
Are they in state though, like, are they?
Well, both, right?
Yeah.
Um, there is some in migration for sure, and we want some in migration.
Yeah.
Um, but, uh, that still is a small percentage of people looking for homes today at any one time, so.
My question is wondering about size of home.
Well, but I just, so, we wanna see the seven hundred thousand dollar homes built, but we also wanna see these new uh, innovative downtown codes getting built so people can build duplexes and triplexes and ADUs, much smaller units that are 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 gonna come online at at much lower, lower prices. Um, we're pushing for that kind of reform as well. Um, we also need to keep building the the low-income permanently subsidies. It really is a, you know, a yes and strategy that, um, we are pushing for that we think happens when you have a kind of fully functioning housing market.
So is chips only for the low-income companies? So that's not.
It's not, I know, it's chip, it'd be, chip, chip, if you were using it for low-income housing, you'd get an additional increment. But it is, it has been a very interesting part of the debate and why I really have some optimism that there's sort of a sea change going on. There was some like talk of limiting it only for low and moderate income housing, and that got rejected by the legislators. They understand we gotta build for the full range of the market.
We've, we've gotta wrap up this conversation, but let let me make two observations. The issue of housing as housing for homes is very important, but it misses, I think, a larger issue, which is if those homes are homes for workers, we're gonna bring down Vermont's off-the-charts average age, which will have huge impacts on healthcare directly, since people like me are just leading the healthcare industry at every, they they have. And it'll help education because it'll fill our half empty schools. And so thinking of it at a higher level and longer term, it's really about larger issues in terms of stimulating Vermont's economy to get it back on the speed. The other thing I wanted to say is thank you, thank you, thank you so much for doing what you do. We've had Vermont Futures, which has been great in pushing out data. But you've really brought the conversation to every front porch and had it resonate with people, that had people talking about it. And hopefully you can really make a difference with what you're doing there, with your outreach and with your, what you're doing in the legislature.
Thank you for saying that, Peter. Um, thank you for your, your, your support and and let me know how we can work with you as you get to your further team. Well, could you, I know you gotta work on, but where, where are you expect, where are you gonna write across this? I need to stick around. I need some more pieces.
It's the first option to draw a column sometimes.
Yeah, great.
And add one to the staff, we need you to put stuff on.
Okay, I do too, here, could I mention, mention one optimistic point is it appears that all of a sudden the trades are becoming very popular careers compared to, when I was fifty-five, the average age of a carpenter was fifty-five. Um. I'm seventy-three, I hate to think of what it is now. Yeah, um, but it it sounds like we maybe start to create the, um, workers' buildings, which I said.
Richard Robby's, uh, E C C training center down there, they've been there. No, it's just, uh, high of activity, uh, so many training classes going on, it's been, it's that, yeah, helps count.
Okay, thank you very much, Meron. Great presentation, and you're doing the Lord's workers.
Me too. In July, we have Vermont Futures Project coming back.
So next item on the agenda, our commission reports, starting with finance. Burke isn't here, is there anyone else who can speak for the finance?
We'll be meeting early too, so we're gonna, that might be exciting.
Personnel, I don't think you need to add, some help that I'll be, I think we got a day and can't figure it out.
Right.
Uh, executive committee, we met, um, but it's adequately disoriented in the, um, agenda, so I don't need to add that. Uh, project review, Bill?
Yes, the project review met, and we have two projects that are in your package, or appears to be your date. And one of them requires more action tonight. The first project is a low-income, fine, five, bagel, solar project, which was found to be in accordance with the legal plan. Uh, we did, that's a sufficient on that relative to traditional, our, a lot of study and some, um, innovation for, uh, potential land land purchases together. The second is where we need more action and is for favorable purposes. Specifically, we asked for more action whenever there's a substantial regional impact. This project, a local project, that helps to connect the Canadian.
This project, a local project that helps to connect the Canadian sources of energy to. Vermont and beyond will be improved. Because of a ten twenty five million increase in capacity of uh high gate dairy backing facilities. And so the substantial regional impact is a positive one rather than anything that's adverse. And so given that it does have that substantial regional impact, we do need some concurrence on. The committee's findings that is in accordance with the regional plan. That it does have a substantial regional impact, but that we are in favor of supporting the application. Uh, you want to uh use that as your motion or you want to make a separate motion?
That would be my order.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Both?
Aye.
Good, motion carried. Thank you. Okay, next is. Uh, TAC.
Um, we didn't need, um, I don't think there's much to add to what Kyle had added under. Staff reports, although we do have a chair meeting and I know vice chair. And perpetual problem is, I'm not a chair for. Um, is attendance. And I know staff update has been discussing maybe making TAC a regular regional overview. Um, and there's some, thanks to Kyle, we'll share it with the students, they're still very, very. Top of the air, but. I'll I'll say we we desperately need to get more representation for months or. Um, forum slide, it would be a five, but we.
Okay, maybe we can work on that one slide.
Yeah.
Yeah, Ivan?
Who is apparently uh representing that right now? What towns are you representing?
Well, my old people. That's what I'm saying, Kathy, it's in here.
I'll be able to answer that question in a minute.
Yeah, all right. So I have another uh comment. Um, I had two Franklin residents and one Highgate resident contact me uh the past week or so. Concerns uh slash complaints about the bridge on two oh seven in Highgate. The transition between uh from road to bridge is extremely. Let's just say these are a lot of T L C and we're wondering if we can have something done to it, wrote that because it's. It's not good. Just bringing it up to TAC.
Yeah. Okay. Hopefully Matthew reserve contacted with the council. He's been meeting. We're a little out of touch with him because we haven't come to meetings.
Just have Kyle come back and I'll be like, oh, let's come.
Yeah, um, we had a meeting with Kyle's accountant wasn't much pressing when we had a meeting. I have a forum, so it's all off and then. Matthew, I think it's a way for our last chance, so we kind of list their things. The bad news for that's long. Is that the state has told Kyle that all of the projects. Painting and bridges that are in the list for the state to complete will take until twenty thirty. To do, so they are not accepting. Any new additions to the project with this point. Um, I think there's a Innesburg, there's a bridge that's desperate shape and and. That did come up at the last TAC.
And when?
A lot of years before any new project will get started.
When's the next happening?
Um. Thursday, the.
Uh, June twelve.
Twelve.
Definitely I have. You have it. Uh, and so you're in luck, Ivan, and answer to your question. Franklin does have a vacancy on the TAC.
I didn't even think since you left.
So I'm just gonna, I'm gonna read the vacancies that we have. Albert Town, Bakersfield, Berkshire. Franklin. Highgate, Isle of Monte, North Hero, St. Albans City.
And I thought about, are you looking for town, road, people, town? Representatives in general?
People who are interested in transportation issues.
Before the pandemic, we had a really good representation from uh road form and road commissioners and and they. They shared a lot of knowledge. Um, and lately it was just. Where from towns.
And and we've really talked about recognizing that the public works folks need a different venue. And so participating with staff on occasion, but doing other connections for that, but it's probably the percentage given how it works now.
It isn't necessarily due to lack of pizza, but since we went on to.
He's sweet, so. You go back five ten years, it was a. There were more commissioners, forum members, select board members that were the highway reps for their town. Was it, they were the largest percentage for some of this, were just there to deal with their expedition, one way or another. And it, they really went from one extreme to the other and this is that strong top.
And in fact, only needs one representative to spur down. Yeah, Franklin doesn't have a representative.
Yeah, that did with the long, long serving member who just recently stepped down. That's that's that, yeah.
They have to be pointed by their supervisor. Okay.
Okay, uh, Brownfield's committee.
Uh, we approved three um projects for funding at the last meeting, one in South Sea Row. One, I think, one in Harbor Street's line, and then the last one is two portions of project for Highgate going to work.
Good, regional plan and policy, all right?
Um, I think we're gonna cover that the next agenda, but we reviewed some changes and updates to that in chapter of the regional plan. Apps. Now we'll let you turn. Catherine Brady. Uh, the board.
Right, uh, Vermont Economic Progress Council, Barbara. Uh, Green Mountain Transit Bob.
I can read some of those. So they had their final annual, their training, well, federal review, which is. I don't look at anything, nothing. And now most are positive, the few things that weren't positive, they. How we correct or process it correctly. Um. Also start working on their policies, be a lot more clear and sustainable across the area. There should also be positive. Um, this is a piece we did discuss is worth continuing that financial issues that everyone's. You know, girl. So we got another round of room changes that have been open in place in the next month. Trying to balance up. Great.
Thank you. Um, Health and Boots Advisory Committee, Marietta.
Good.
Uh, I am Northwest Regional, Vermont Regional Foundation, Kirk is in here. Now we didn't. Okay, any staff members want to raise anything from their their report? Okay, um, on to the next item, which is the regional plan amendment and adoption.
All right, so it's very fitting that we, this follows the presentation that you just had. Emily and I are gonna take some time to go through a presentation about the regional plan. A quick uh reminder as to why we're doing what we're doing, the context of what we're doing, and then we'll talk about what we're actually doing. And you can have that in full things, Burke and I can do that. I've been doing so many presentations lately, I just. But I'm happy to sit. Yes, now the next one's time to refresh it, so while we get the presentation on. Thank you.
All right, both. Yeah. You should have.
Bye, Charlie. You need to go to slideshow. I love it, sure. Yeah, you know.
Oh, no.
All right. So what I just said, we're gonna do, we'll talk about the context of why we're doing it, what we're doing, and then when we're doing it. And I'll talk about the Act one eighty one overview and the future land use map. They'll turn it over to Emily for housing targets and then I'll come back and talk about the schedule for the four night. All right, so as a quick review, Act one eighty one, that was the pass that's causing us to update our regional plan. Does a few things, it changed, it made changes to Act two fifty. It made changes to state designation program and it made changes to our regional plan, both what's in it and what the regional plan needs. It requires us to update our regional plan, which we're gonna talk about in a second. It requires us to set housing targets for each municipality in the region. And then this regional plan will then set the stage for changes to Act fifty jurisdiction and state designation and incentive. Under this new formula. Once we adopt our regional plan. It's now going to go to the state land use review board, which is a new body that we set up to review all of the new regional plans that are adopted. Once this state body approves our regional plan, two things happen. The state designations that everyone has previously had to apply for individually, town by town and go to the state board and get approval. That is now going to happen automatically with the acceptance of our mass. The other thing is it will change Act two fifty exemption in those areas, Act two fifty jurisdiction in those areas planned for growth. So in, we'll talk about the specifics, but. Pre Act one eighty one, if you build ten housing units or more, you triggered Act fifty in most cases. With the adoption of our new mass in the areas that are planned for growth. If a town decides to opt in, you could build up to fifty houses on up to ten acres without triggering Act fifty. So it really loosens Act fifty for housing with the adoption of our plan and the approval of our plan by the state. So that's a big change, having our regional plan be a controlling item for the state designation program. And Act fifty jurisdiction is new, it's a brand new policy framework. It makes our regional plan. Mean a lot more and have a lot more impact. And that's why we're doing things a little bit differently this time. So we'll talk about that. The Act one eighty one also has some new planning goals, two in particular I'd like to highlight is that. We are required to demonstrate that a majority of those housing targets that I mentioned that we're setting for the municipality. Can be accomplished in those areas planned for growth. And we also have to include an examination of environmental benefits and burdens to make sure that our regional plan does not. Perpetuate any inequities that currently exist or make them worse. And then there's some additional new requirements. We have to have a more robust public participation outreach plan than we did previously. More focus on equity and then the main thing that we're doing with the mapping is these consistent land use areas. So statewide now, every regional planning commission is going to use the same future land use areas. And we're even gonna use the same columns. So you look at our map or you look at the. Northeast Kingdom or Bennington, if it's if it's dark purple, it's the same thing on their map as it is on ours. As a result, you're gonna be able to stitch together a statewide land use plan, future land use plan. And uh. Within the future land use areas, there are eleven different districts. One of the things that our speaker mentioned earlier is that he thought it would be simpler. And one of the reasons why it's not simpler is that we aren't actually mapping the new tiered system for Act fifty. We, we don't map the tiers per se because they don't go into effect until our plan is approved. What we are mapping is the areas that are eligible. And additionally, our future land use. Plan and map. Has other uses other than Act two fifty jurisdiction. And so there's reasons why we got different land use areas, there's different policy objectives, there's different motives for the different areas. And so that's why we had more than just the the three tiers that are in Act two fifty. But if you look at these eleven land use categories. There are areas planned for growth, the downtowns and village centers, planned growth areas, village areas and transition. Except for transition, which is kind of that. Sprawl compare, people call it sometimes, areas that may have had previous strict development and they have potential to transition to to a more smart growth formula. The other areas, the other four areas are the areas that are eligible for the Act two fifty jurisdiction change and the state designation program. The next category over, we have rural areas and those in our region uh in statewide are the general rural where you just might think of, you know, where people like to live. Then there's the agricultural resources, forestry resources and conservation areas. And then finally, there's some real specific. Excuse me, um. Land use areas, enterprises is standalone industrial parks or the airport or uh, you know, large quarries. It's really those single use economic driver locations. And then there's a resource based preparation in most regions that ski areas, originally RPC without a ski area. I talked about a lot. Well, hard app, yes, hard app. On live hard app. Really only says that a corporate owns a area. Uh, so that's mostly what it is, but in our region, I think we've mapped some of the lake shore areas and like retired the place, some more smaller scampas. But definitely still appropriate for our region. Uh, and then this is just a little bit more detail about those areas planned for growth. But when you think about the downtown village centers, it's exactly what it sounds like. It's a smaller, they are smaller geographies of the more intense, often multi-story development. Areas within our our downtowns and villages. And then the plain growth areas and the village areas are those places that are that surround the downtowns and are often largely housing development versus a mix of commercial and housing. Uh, but there is often commercial and public spaces and community facilities structure in those areas as well. And so you've put it all together and this is what we have for a map and after we're done the presentation, we're just gonna. Have a break so everybody can get out and walk around and and look at all of these. This map was developed. By everyone on our staff in the land use areas, so Ellen Clark, the Slumber, Greta Brunswick and myself, meeting with select boards and planning commissions. We started with the local plans whenever we could and we tried to build our growth areas around the local plan called growth, but we're also constrained by what state statute has. So all of these land use areas have statutory definition, which in some cases caused us to happen to not draw the area the same as a town and like for a growth area. We haven't, we'll total up the acreage for some of our public outreach, but I would say that. We haven't, we'll total up the acreage for some of our public outreach, but I would say that. The areas now eligible for the state incentive programs. And Act two fifty designation, Act two fifty jurisdiction changes is significantly larger. Than what exists right now in terms of the downtown village center designation program. So we have been able to add significant acreage to communities to make them eligible, more, more geography eligible for these incentive programs. I would also say that. In the, for the most part. Act one eighty-one had some interim Act fifty jurisdiction changes where a quarter mile around designated downtown or village center, as right now, that fifty unit trigger for housing. In most cases in our communities, the areas that we were able to draw growth. Are at least the same size as that quarter mile buffer. Sometimes larger, there's a different shape. So like if you look at a town like South here, over a quarter mile buffer, half of it was in Lake Champlain. So that doesn't really get everything, but, but the area that we were able to draw going on to South Street and down toward the school was equivalent in size. And this again is up here, so we have two different maps that. That will show you, the first is the areas that are planned growth areas, and those are the larger municipalities in our region. Those that already in our current regional plan have a growth center, and these are the larger communities. And then. The second map that we have here, next to it is the smaller village center. So those are the smaller sized population. And I think we already saw this map once today, but as a reminder, so we have these eleven land use categories across the top. The first four land use categories are eligible for the state incentive programs. That's the community and the community investment designations. And then also the first four are eligible for the Act two fifty jurisdiction changes. Municipal, municipal select boards will be asked if they want to opt-in to that fifty unit jurisdictional change sometime in the August, September, October timeframe. We'll let you know when we reach out to municipalities to ask them that question, and so that you can provide your feedback to that as well. And, great.
So as a part of this work, also we were. Sort of to develop municipal housing targets based on regional housing target. Slide there. So. The R C's collaborated with state. Was it? East, the agency, V F, yeah, yeah. To develop the regionalization of the statewide housing target, which was released in January twenty twenty-five. And the twenty fifty targets were created using two assumptions, both of which have been keyed up nicely by some of those population charts were used. Looking at the population growth that Vermont has historically received. So on the lower end, looking at that twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three population growth. Which was a little higher with some of the COVID in migration that we saw into the state. So moving in. And then the upper end, looking at an average from nineteen fifty to twenty twenty. So really looking at that broader kind of population growth that we saw in Vermont. So it's really grounded in what Vermont has historically been able to grow. But looking at greater numbers than we're necessarily seeing on average now. So for the northwest region, that came to be about two to three thousand housing units by twenty thirty, and then about seven to thirteen thousand units by twenty fifty. So that's a big number. And we can go to the next slide here. To talk about how we then took that number and thought about how we would bring it out amongst the municipalities. So really tying back into that planning goal that the substantial majority of. Housing growth will happen in areas planned for growth. The first thing we did was look at communities that have planned growth centers. So those are those five communities that you saw map earlier are really biggest. Sort of sub-regional areas of growth. And we assigned sixty percent of all the housing target. Across those communities based on the number of existing housing units. And then we split the remaining forty percent of the housing target across all the communities in the state, including those communities again, looking at the rural areas in those towns. So in large part by twenty fifty, that led to a growth rate of about point six to one point two percent a year in our rural communities. And then a growth rate of one point two to two point five percent in those communities with planned growth center. And we do have all these numbers up to. Check it out afterwards for your specific counts. I know you probably cannot read this chart.
I'm going to email this to everybody.
I'm lucky that, that he has it in front of me because I can't read it. And this is a big difference between our current, our average growth rate starting in two thousand, two thousand to two thousand and twenty. We had a growth rate of point eight percent a year in the region. So we're talking about, you know, potentially almost doubling our housing growth per year in the region by twenty fifty. It's a really big thing for all communities. And it's really an aspirational goal that lets us think about the ways that we might need to change our planning and our infrastructure in order to be able to accommodate this type of housing growth.
All right, so outreach and adoption schedule. Next. Okay, so the overall project schedule. We started this work in the fall, meeting with our municipalities, meeting with the regional plan and, and policy committee now, which is just a plan and po, we've been at so long the committee name changed. Now it's the plan and policy committee. We've been meeting with them and they've been a great sounding board to provide feedback. We've been collaborating with the municipalities with the goal being that when we start our public outreach, we started a map that municipalities are comfortable with. We didn't want to start our public outreach until we got to that point. We're at that point now. And so we're going, we're in phase, I can't read either, but I think we're in phase three, we're in phase three where we're beginning our public outreach. So our public outreach is going to start in earnest shortly after this meeting. And then phase four will be the actual review and adoption process at the regional and state level. And that will happen in late fall through.
So you want to talk about this one, Emily? Sure. Yeah, so we have, I think we're up to seven now planned to be open houses to get the general public's feedback. So we try to spread these across regions. These are all tentative games combined. So. Make sure you take, we'll have our website up soon, and if those change, we'll let you know. We're still tracking down everyone for scheduling. We'll do seven events throughout the region. We're going to be tabling. We're going to be offering gift cards to some local businesses. To encourage participation. Any ideas for it to really be a drop-in, take a look at the maps, share your feedback, really accessible to the general public. Way of getting people's input on this plan and really understanding where do they need housing, where do they see in their community where there's opportunities for growth. You know. What, what stories do they have about the needs of their communities that we can bring as part of this process? So. We're, we're really excited to start this process and, and get that public feedback. And meet our public participation goals. We have a public participation plan. And as part of this new statute as well, ensuring that little participation is really important. So you try to spread these out throughout the region through different events, different. Types of places where people might already be. So we're not asking people to come to a, a meeting at night. They don't have childcare and all sorts of other things to kind of check people where they are and where they participate at the level that feels right for them.
And as Emily noted, this is in process. So we, we'll be trying to add more and other outreach and things as well.
I just was going to ask if things were, I mean, obviously, south historically, I'm saying that Georgia is near me and it's. Whether it was the intent to go if it's near you as opposed to being your community.
Yes, it's intended to be sort of sub-regional in nature. So we're hitting as many, we can't get all twenty, whatever it's like something. But trying to get, be as valid across the region. So then there's one close to everyone.
Yeah, so you'll have the full packet. So like whatever community the person's from, you'd have.
Yes, yeah, be the full region now, full estimation.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And there's still some halls, like we're only in one town right now. So we're still building out the schedule.
Yes.
What was that? Oh, did we add?
All right, awesome. Last I saw it, yes.
Fantastic. All right, excellent. Okay, so. Let's talk about what this means for you as a board. So this is your introduction, we're going to land use map and the housing targets, and then we're doing our public outreach. The plan is to have a draft plan to you in advance of the July board meeting. So that at the July board meeting, we'll be able to get your initial feedback, your initial thoughts, your initial comments. We'll continue some public outreach after that on the actual draft plan itself, because this first phase of outreach is just the, the land use map and the map targets. And then. We expect in September. To have a second draft for you to review. At the September meeting, we'll be asking you to approve. Not the plan. But approve us submitting it to the land use review board. Part of this new process requires a sixty-day review by the land use review board prior to our first public hearing. So your approval in September that we'd be asking from you is simply to send it to them for their initial review. When we get that back. We'll take those, that feedback, any additional public comment that we get, any additional board comment that we get. Work with the committee as we have, continue to do this process to make a final plan. We hope to have. That done and start hearing the formal hearing process by the end of the calendar year. And then we have a goal to have it adopted, submitted to the land use review board by February of twenty twenty-six. They then have their approval process. When it's all said and done, we're hoping by May of twenty twenty-six, so a year from now, we're going to have a new land. And it's good for a while. Eight years, Elizabeth, eight years.
Till they come up with another change.
Yes, yes. So. It's a long process now because of that sixty day, as noticed to the land use review board, what was a, you know, four-month adoption process is now a six-month adoption process. So it's a lot of time in process, but your jobs will be reviewing it in for July, reviewing it for September, and then adoption for February. Any questions about that? I think that's it.
If, if the towns opt-in, do they still have to consider some of the parameters from Act two fifty? Or is it spread out? There's a lot of quiet, fearful people.
No, they don't.
Yeah.
No. No, that's the whole goal is to have one review of the local rural supply and that's that. And really, you know. The way I look at it is it puts housing on par with commercial development because you could tell Act two fifty was adopted at a time when people were concerned about rapid housing growth. Because you can build ten-acre commercial projects without going through Act fifty, but you can't build ten houses without going through Act fifty. This now says you can build fifty houses on ten acres. So ten acres is the trigger for housing, ten acres is the trigger for commercial. So it puts it on par. So what we were hoping next. These were formal adjournments for you. I don't know. I don't think you could adjourn first.
It's a few. Bill of commissioners now.
Yeah, okay. So after official announcements, so adjourned, then Emily and I will be around with your questions about the map, housing targets. And I will say that we will. We're hoping to have the website available to go live in the next couple of days. And so I will follow up with everybody. We each have a link to that with this presentation so that it'll all be ready and then we'll start all the public chats.
Could you, you did say you would, but just the, the whole opt-in thing, my, my select board and town manager are going to need a lot of guidance on that, I think.
Yes.
So if you could, for anybody that have a packet that I understand so that I can guide them.
Yeah.
What the question is as to opt-in.
Yeah, we'll be doing a, you don't know the channel, but we'll be doing. A letter specific, specific to each municipality.
Thank you.
That is sent to them directly to the select boards. I, I have been to many select boards already to track them that this question's coming, including their back. And so we'll be following up and we'll be able to go and answer questions.
Great.
And the municipality opt-in before the regional plan is deceptive, causing land use review board?
Yeah, so as part of that formal submission, and when we adopt the plan in February, we'll need to know by then at the latest every town that wants to opt-in.
Because where are we revising our town plan? It would be useful if we could get our town to opt-in and then exclusively. Support that in the town plan revision rather than have the opt-in or manager of the town plan or region who can't address that.
Uh huh. Yeah, I mean, either one is fine. Yeah, you don't, it doesn't need to be in the town plan in order to opt-in, but if you're, the process lines up, that's fantastic.
Perfectly supported.
Yeah. Yeah, what was the byline? In fact, you're in the latest, but we're going to be reaching out to towns in the August, September, October timeframe. I'm not quite sure what month, but somewhere in that. That'll give us time to schedule meetings with all the towns that have questions.
Any other questions on land use maps and housing targets? If not, commissioner announcements. You want to have a commissioner announcement? Okay, well, I have, I have to say that I have one, and bear with me for a moment. In our December commissioner meeting, we recognize staff members who reached certain employment milestones. And we also recognized briefly Catherine's thirty years experience. But. Now's the time to do so much more formally and appropriately and make her even more embarrassing. I have only been at NRPC a few years, so I don't have the perspective that a lot of you do in terms of. All of her accomplishments over those thirty years, but I do have some perspective on the value that she adds to our group. And she clearly. Provides an incredible amount of knowledge, which is necessary for all the disparate things that we do. That she will, for instance. Give us a substantive presentation at just about every commissioner meeting and sometimes even the committee meetings. And that requires an incredible amount of work and time to be able to do so. She also has been very effective in cultivating relationships with our member towns, reaching out to all twenty-three. Municipalities that are in our region, as well as the state government, as well as the nonprofits that we coordinate with. And she finally facilitates quite a bit new ideas, diverse perspectives, which we really need in order to be a vibrant commission. One example of her reaching out is that very recently Catherine met twice in person. With the South Hero Planning Commission and Select Board. And she has been doing that and a number of other towns as well. And all I can say is she either has a clone or she doesn't sleep, but I don't know. So Catherine, on behalf of the commissioners, I want to thank you for all that you have done for us in guiding. The NRPC to promote the more sustainable future for Vermont.
Got two remarks from Bethany, so.
And I know you think this is already a handle. Important milestone of thirty-year mission. And I'll be having the staff who would say, thank you. Thank you for creating a very collaborative and supportive environment, allowing each of us to thrive in our own unique ways and just supporting us throughout. And I just have a few phrases, a few words from other staff members from N R B. So Catherine's leadership at NRPC is a shining example of how care from the top can foster a work environment that is truly collaborative, supportive. And a building block for fulfilling life. Catherine leaves with respect, honesty, humor, and genuine care for the work we do and the people that we are. I have worked with hundreds of leaders at local, regional. I have worked with hundreds of leaders at local, regional, the state level and very few rise to the level that Catherine holds and humbly so. And then Catherine serves as a leader, advisor and advocate for her staff and makes NRPC a truly wonderful place to work. I don't know how many other people get to brag about how wonderful their boss is, but I do. And those are just a few words from staff and we are very incredibly fortunate to be able to work with you. And work with some major caliber. So thank you.
Now we will poke into our appreciations.
This is most of that. And this is a technique tie, I've been told. So you only have to pull one thing and it's all.
I guess we're getting where I don't have talent. This is so, this is such a nice and unexpected surprise.
So as you open it, what I'll note is that. If you choose to have this in your office, which is what are the selected for, it comes with hanging services. Professional painting services, but if you want to bring it home.
I noticed that all the pictures are from my former office, so on the chair. This was the exact.
Oh, wow, this is gorgeous. Oh, thank you so much. It's the ladies in the park.
Bethany, Bethany took a lot of time in. Working out what we're gonna do, how we're gonna do it and what we should get. And she's seen a lot of work and thank you very much.
Yeah, and part of our staff was Noel, I guess.
Well, I, all I'll say is that I would never stay thirty years in a region that has such a wonderful staff, such a wonderful board and such amazing communities.
Great.
Thank you.
That's right. I remember how worried he was when we kicked you out of the exam room. That shouldn't have exactly. Thought we had a good reason for doing it.
And then I immediately forgot all about it. Well, thank you all so much. It always, it means a lot. I appreciate it greatly.
Okay, with that, motion to adjourn. So second.
Second.
Followers in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you. Well, take please a home if you want and come look at the maps and how the party will happen. Thank you. That would sound sweet.